Okay. Let's call this meeting to order. It's ten oh five. Welcome to all. First item on the agenda, if we have the approval of the agenda. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Oh, I can second.
I think you're the only one. Any discussion? All right. Okay. So let's, if you approve the agenda, say yes.
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 Yes? The agenda is approved. All right. The approval, review and approval of the September eleventh Finance Committee meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve them as written?
Hi. So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes as written, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes unanimously. All right. Audit follow-up? Do we have any additional comments about the audit or is that pretty much it?
I think we're around. Clean audit. We have distributed copies to, I think, Library Virginia for part of their process. I know we've handed out copies to Hanover, King William. We've got one for Goochlin. We'll get to that in a minute. So yeah.
Fantastic.
Twenty-four is done. Start looking forward to twenty-five. Not tomorrow, but you know.
You've got some time.
Yeah, what a difference a year makes.
Yeah, congratulations. Having that behind you and be having a clean slate, so to speak. So also very happy with no material findings and that's where we want to be. So super excited about that.
Fantastic.
Are there any plans to do any kind of wrap-up meeting? I know we talked about that.
I was going to ask because I still have something for Friday on my calendar.
I don't think we're looking at anything. Mayors did ask me because they were trying to lock down Hanovers and put monkey jails because that's part of their contract that we're part of. If we could hold off on a wrap-off meeting, they didn't want to do it here in November. We're probably looking at January, maybe December or maybe January. But yeah, we do want to get to have a wrap-up meeting, but it's kind of on their timetable because they're trying to finish up the other partners in the contract.
Are there any concerns from staff's side as far as how things went this year or anything you'd like to see changed or do you feel like it's a good process?
I think, we've got a good process. I am always worried about changes to GASP because we're a small organization and, but I mean, the good news is, is two of the big changes we've made thanks to the board is we have Ms. Schaubers to help with that. That's huge. And just the fact that Mayor writes the drafts of the statements is a complete game changer for us. So we've kind of got, as long as we can keep that template in line, I feel like if there is something to do with GASP, we've got Ann to pick that up and then the statements, we've got Mayor's. So we're in good shape. I mean, the only thing I left Mayor's with was like, they can't make any personnel changes?
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
This still works. Leave it alone.
Yeah, you know, it's working, you know. So I mean, nah, I think, you know, I think organizationally wise, you know, we came together really well. The board was super supportive. Jamie was great. Sharita was great. Cindy inside our office helping us was fantastic. You know, I mean, we've got dependencies outside with things like donated services and stuff, but it is what it is. So, but overall, it worked good. I mean, one of my biggest challenges, I think, is there was a lot of good communication and organization with that and how I could take that sort of energy and process and apply it to like the next thing and the next thing and the next thing and just sort of keep the triangle. So, yeah.
Well done.
So out of curiosity, how much time do you think having PB Mayor's draft the reports? How much time did that save you? Do you have any idea?
Conservatively, it's forty hours. It is probably realistically probably somewhere close to eighty.
Okay.
I mean, that's, if that's all I did was spend two weeks on trying to draft those statements and like handing it back and forth, that is probably my, my hour basis. Yeah. And that's, you know, last year might've been a little better because nothing significantly changed, but when you get some sort of new GASP implementation, all that sort of, that modeling and stuff goes out the window and like then we're back to trying to build our own models and get help from other organizations and it's, Hanover and our partners do a fine job with that, but they're just, they operate at different scales than we operate and that's what I think sometimes trips us up because their threshold for something isn't our threshold because, you know, we're a six million dollar operation versus a three-hundred-million-dollar operation. And that's where we, you know, so having, having Ann, that's where she can kind of step in and help with some of that and some of the other challenges. Like there's just drafting some journal entries and stuff that she was able to do for her time investment. I mean, that, that stuff we could've gotten help with from the county, but they're doing their own stuff. So sometimes that, it gets a little shaky there. So I mean.
Do the GASP changes come at any predictable time of year? I mean, is it usually if they're going to come out, they come out in certain time?
We'll start knowing now in the spring. So like right now, I think we're good for twenty-five, which is great. And sometimes it's a minor thing and it's not a big deal, but the, like the capitalization of lease titles, which is a weird concept to me because they're items we don't know, but like capitalizing them and then showing like you're paying it off, but then also depreciating that, that's a lot of, it's a lot of stuff for a net zero value that you just have to do because that's what the accounting boards now across the country say we do. You know, we adapt and we move on and that, but yeah, we, those are the ones, those sort of big ones, those are the ones where we hit and it's like, ooh, like, you know, before that, it was, it was footnotes about post-employment benefits and all that that had, that had come about that had really blown up it over the last ten years. But hopefully those are few and far between, but I feel like now, and I know when GASP came, I mean, fear is not the word, it was complete panic, oh my God, how does that work? There was no software even. Like now, a year later, somebody very quickly developed software, which is Dead Book, that Hanover invested in and we take part in and use because even they struggle with it. So, you know, now having, having sort of more of a support system in place is, you know, really, really helpful.
And there was only one draft back and forth, right, with Mayors or were there?
In total, there was, there was two.
Two, okay.
Yeah, there was, there was initially a very rough draft, which was fine, which, I mean, when I say rough though, there was only like a handful of changes there. It was more, I think it was really more of them sort of understanding how we, you know, RGL codes, you know. Sometimes you read the description of the code, but it's not, it's not as specific or they think of it in one way and it's a one and other. So it's, it's minor issues. The second draft in was, we were sort of more into just the grammatical changes and just some cleanup things that Ann had looked at on the second draft because she actually did look at the first draft and then we were ready to publish. That's a momentous change because even in our best years before, we were looking at, you know, five and six versions of, of the draft. And that's the difference between a company that does it, you know, fifty times a year versus us doing it once a year. Yeah.
Great.
It's good.
Okay. We move on to the update on budget requests, excuse me, to localities?
We can. So King William County, it's my understanding, requested a little earlier than they have in the past for our budget request, which we sent to them by November first of this year and have not heard back from them. We have a meeting with Goochlin County next Monday to present the budget to Goochlin County. And the budget has been sent to Hanover, but we don't have any scheduled meetings or anything at this time.
Okay.
And you'll keep Kristy informed of when you have that.
Yeah, I'm happy to attend with you in whatever form.
Yeah, I'm sure Goochlin's going to be pleased to see no increase.
Yes.
So the meeting on, on Monday with Goochlin is with the administrator or?
With the county administrator.
Okay. So that's all in order. Okay, status of the funding slash motion to hire a contractor to do the study of the PRL structure.
I can give you all an update on that. So I reached out to a couple of, well, I reached out to the library directors to see if they had recently used a company and two names came up, CD Weigert Solutions and Berkeley Group, and reached out to both of them and was in touch with the Berkeley Group and spoke to the, I guess, the CEO of that company about what we were looking for in terms of the staffing study. And she was able to send us back a cooperative contract that if we didn't want to go out to bid, we could likely use to procure their services if we wanted to go with that company. This time, her recommendation was until we know what King William is doing, it doesn't make, you know, sense to go into a staffing study and say, we have option one for your organization and then option two because we're paying for.
That's what would be option three.
Right. So that really, at this point, we do need to kind of hold off until we get that decision in order to move forward with.
That makes sense.
It does. And I'm, I'm glad, I'm glad to talk that through with her and explain, I mean, it's a little complicated, what's going on, and that was her recommendation, was to really not, you know, dive into a staffing study until you really understand, you know, where we're going to land.
And we feel that that decision theoretically will be made after the end of the year? I mean, we're waiting for that twelve thirty-one deadline?
Yeah. I believe so.
And have they given any inclination that they might let us know early in January?
No.
Wonderful.
The only thing I would say is that recommendation that they, that they presented was that, it wasn't called a recommendation. I don't remember what it was called.
The resolution.
Yeah, resolution, thank you. I needed to start with an R. Yeah, in that resolution, they said they will know something by January.
That was my impression.
Yeah. So, and I think they're going to stick to that and we had a good, good meeting with the new administrator in King William. So that was good.
Would now be a time to talk about that letter at all or should we talk about that tomorrow?
Yeah.
Now?
No, tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Okay. All right. Good. Okay, so that's, I know Bob wants to talk to you about it from the personnel standpoint.
Yes, yes. Sorry, I owe him a call back.
All right. And we want to talk about preparing the appropriate motion so that we can hire Ann Schauber for, I guess, we're going to leave it open, how many hours up to or?
Well, we, we talked about, I think that's up to us. We talked about maybe doing up to X number of hours per month and, you know, if we needed to go over that on a month, we would, we could certainly, you know, do an override of it. One of the things that I think we need to do is come up with a job description, you know, so what are some of the things that we are, you know, we obviously know that we need, we want her to work with us on the audit, but we need to decide, you know, we talked about doing some overarching assistance with, you know, some of the structures that are within our county.
Well, would that be best, Ken, to put together the list of things and work, I mean, maybe work with Ann?
So are we basically looking to update her kind of tasks that are in her present?
You have this right.
In her present contract or I guess this isn't really a contract, right? This is a proposal that she's?
No, that, that is the original contract signed. And as, as far as she's concerned, that's still enforceable today. She looks at the last line, I think it says other financial services, you know, she said that's sort of the catch-all for if we have any, you know, questions that, that evolve, that go from outside the audit, whether it be, you know, budget or, you know, general ledger or, you know, some sort of operational question to ask that she falls, that falls into where that gives her sort of that, you know, we ask and she can say, well, that falls into this and that's, I'll answer you back for that. She, she doesn't have an issue with if we want to sort of flesh that out in more detail. She actually gave me the word document to send to Ellen if we would have decided to go that way. But I mean, she's also, you know, she feels like she's covered or she, and she's got us covered with anything right there in her agreement. I think it really breaks down to usage. I know year-to-date, which covers us all the way through the audit, we've spent fifty-four-hundred dollars with her, just going to round up. It's fifty-three, sixty-seven, fifty, but fifty-four-hundred dollars to date.
That's through literally today?
That's literally through today.
Okay.
And we, obviously, we need to update dates and stuff in this, you know, because her rate is now a hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if you take this as the, the basis, the kind of boilerplate, update it, make any changes you feel necessary, although I imagine this is pretty complete.
Yeah.
For what she does.
For what she does.
Update the dates, the amounts, the tax, I mean, the federal rate of, of course, we don't know what that's going to be, do we, for twenty-five yet?
Yeah, I believe it's out there right now.
Is it out there? Okay.
So does Mrs. Schauber have a time of the year where she's less busy or is she kind of consistently, I could imagine like audit periods are probably like this time and like beginning, are there audits that happen at the beginning of the year for other institutions or is it all?
No, everybody's pretty much on the same schedule where you're starting the first, the fiscal year up until about November. So I mean, yeah, I mean, there would be, if there's special projects or something you, we, the board, we wanted to look into particularly, I would imagine it would be, you know, January to March. She is also, she also teaches and works with BG FWA, the Virginia Government and Academy Group. So I mean, she, she does, you know, works with them and does some of that too as, as part of her, her business model.
Just wondered if we wanted to revisit, because we talked about financial policies again and revisiting them in summer next year, but I'm wondering if that's for her maybe not the best time to that.
I wonder if spring is another time for her.
You know, so I was just, if we could maybe plan our kind of bigger projects around.
She doesn't do taxes at all. She's not involved in the taxes and media?
I don't think she prepares any sort of actual tax preparation. Her, the bulk of her business seems to be dealing with, with local governments or political subdivisions, jails, libraries to help them go through stuff. But I mean, policy review, I mean, I, you know, if we probably gave it to her and gave her, you know, the first year or something like that today, could you review and notes and make recommendations? I'm sure she would be happy to.
Well, in keeping with that, it'd be nice if we could, is this possible to get this drafted so we can vote on it next week?
Yes.
So I don't think it.
Yeah.
Just get the, literally, it's get this to, to Ellen, have her write up a, an agreement and then we'll look at it.
And you're saying that wording, other than changing dates and things?
Yeah, other than changing dates and things. I mean, Ann actually wrote that agreement. That's her agreement that she wrote and she provides out to all of her clients, so that's.
Yeah, and just make, just make it like not year dependent, right?
Yeah.
Just assist with your enclose and not have dates in it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, do we want to cap the number of hours per month?
How, how do you, it's not, that's not in here, but how?
No, I mean, she, she bills, she bills straight on the hour. About every month, she, she will send an invoice with a, with a log of, you know, her time spent. So, you know, I can see, you know, like her final review of the audit draft was like two and a half hours and, you know, or the meetings are on there for, you know, she doesn't charge for the full hour if it's thirty minutes, but she'll charge, you know, quarter hour, half, you know, half, half an hour. So it's not like we're always just, even if we're on a call for fifteen minutes, she charges us quarter hour. She does pro-rate out her time, which, but she, she, she provides a log, you know, and we've looked through it, reviewed it and said, okay, yep, all that matches up, that's what we've asked, you know, and then we've gone ahead and issued payment. So I mean, right now, we've looked to date, it's about twenty-seven hours if you math it out to date from July one until today that she's worked on it. Now, some of that was a bit like morphed back towards September when she was doing some entries, then the last, the bill, last bill was like for three hours as we closed out. So there's, there's been some variations on that. I mean, if we wanted to, just to, for budgetary practices, you know, say we wanted to allocate, you know, like five hours a month up to, you know, sixty hours on the year or something like that, or seventy hours on the year to provide for that, you know, that when we are in the busy part of the audit, you know, if she goes to six or seven, we're okay, maybe that's something to consider.
Yeah.
But she does, she does a pretty good job. I mean, she's, she's very fair about managing, you know, her time.
I like the idea of just budgeting maybe an amount and then if we have to revisit that amount, which would equal maybe, you think sixty hours is?
I would say, I would, if we were going to vote, if the board was going to vote, I would say vote on hours instead of putting a dollar threshold on it. That way, we've, we've got some flexibility there. I mean, we, you know.
So do you think sixty hours annually is realistic?
Yeah, and I mean, we could always, if there is some sort of special need, I mean, we.
Revisit, bring it to the board.
Yeah, I mean, I would think if, if we're more, you know, that with her, there's probably some issue we're going to already be addressing and discussing, I would like to think. But I mean, I think, I really, I don't have any plans. I have a small question to give her once things settle that is maybe an hour's worth of time at some point here in the future, but kind of for the rest of the year, her and I, we've been working on the audit, I've sort of already mapped out some of the thoughts I've had in my head. So I don't really, like particularly for the next couple of months, maybe even just an hour of her time, I really don't have anything unless something abnormal comes up to actually ask her.
Okay.
So I would, I mean, and if that's the case, then we're looking at, you know, if the board says sixty and we've only used thirty, if it is, if it's what it is.
I think the financial policy review maybe, and that takes some hours. But we can, you know, we can have her work with Ellen too, you know, she, you know, we'll have her send it, you know, and then Ellen can review it and send it back and, you know, that kind of thing, so.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not currently in a state where I would have to talk to her, you know, right now every day, every week, you know, other than maybe checking in just to see how she's doing, you know.
Yeah.
Just that sort of maintaining that vendor-client relationship, same, you know, with Mayors. I mean, I don't really have, I've got one journal entry in the spring I wanted to kind of revisit with them, but it, and that might even, not even be an hour, it might be a fifteen-minute conversation.
Well, I see, if my math is correct, which is always up for discussion, but I see eleven-thousand-four-hundred annually, so if we were to budget, either that or just twelve thousand.
Are you saying for the sixty hours?
That's one ninety times sixty.
But he's saying vote on hours as.
Yeah, I would say.
Right, but I'm just saying just in our heads.
Oh, just to have it so we've got a whole.
Like sixty hours is eleven thousand four hundred, so if, in a, just in our heads, not putting it down, but sixty hours. Yeah, I like the idea of sixty hours annually and then as always, if we have to revisit.
And we can even put wording in here that says, you know, something to the effect of if needed, you know, we'll discuss any, any excess, you know, or whatever.
Effects.
Yeah. Or any additional hours that we might need.
All right. Ellen, that sounds good to me. Will I give this to Ellen? Will you?
We can do it together or you can do it either way.
Either which will.
As the finance committee chair.
So we will bring this up as a motion then on Wednesday, a week from today, right? Yeah. The only other thing I thought about was discussion of upcoming branches' requests for funds, the fund balance. Do we have any, have any of that in motion yet? Ooh. The look on your face.
We've got a few things. So, just a little background, in September, we had a manager's meeting, team meeting and did some brainstorming to identify kind of a range of services, resources, just to get a whole bunch of things out. And then the library administration team met to kind of categorize those and refine them a bit and select projects we felt like we could achieve in this fiscal year. And that's a, you know, an important point too, is that we didn't want to bite off more than we could chew, but we want to move some things forward. So we've still got lots of, lots of ideas percolating, but these were the main ones that we kind of grabbed out that we thought we could reasonably get this done, even though I will say some of this might be reaching a bit, but it's better to, you know, kind of dream big a little bit.
Dream big.
Some of the projects that are already in the works, it's within our current budget, but I wanted to let you all know about it. We purchased Help Desk Ticket software for our IT, which on, from the IT perspective, it's going to really help with our inventory of our items. It is helping Chris, our IT person, remote into computers to help with Help Desk Tickets and problems that staff are seeing and just make our, Help Desk Ticket process more efficient. So we have signed that contract and Chris is working on implementing that as we speak.
And that's, you said, is in our current budget?
It is within our current budget. And I think some of these things are within our current budget and I'll kind of go through them and I felt like Ken can, can show you where they're tacked in at this point and where we might be reaching into the reserve fund to do, to achieve some of those. The other bit that we're working on, records retention. So we have several years of records that have reached their point of retention and need to be destroyed. And so right after the audit was finished, Ken and Cindy moved on that pretty quickly, which is great, and they have worked with the company in the twenty-second. They're going to brave the basement at Hanover Ranch and haul the items up to be destroyed.
Is this seven years back? Do you wait seven or?
So there's, there's different retention schedules based on what we've got. So for instance, your detailed accounts payable records are three years. There's, there is amply more than three years down there. So, you know, it, it's, you know, so we're, we're not in the schedule. There's no, there's no penalty for that and, and, you know, we just, we fill out the retention schedules, the forms to submit back to the state. I think the state, the state generally is just happy that jurisdictions are trying to follow their schedules. So, you know, I don't think we're going to have any issues there. The idea is if we can get this kind of, this cleanup done now, which is big, then when we're, we can roll this forward to an annual process and we're only looking at like five or six boxes a year versus letting it set for a decade.
When's the last time it was done?
It's been at least five years. It's been, it was prior to myself.
Okay.
So worked with Jamie on, on getting permission to sort of move forward on it and getting that done, so yeah.
So y'all are bringing in a shredder? Is that it, the shred guy?
So, yeah, Hanover County has a contract with Shred It that comes through on-site. So we just had to make a phone call and be like, hey, you know, can you give us a date? Because we've got a little more than I can just fit in a little bin. I've got like a pallet of boxes, maybe two. So yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna roll the truck up sometime on Friday the twenty-second and I just have to get the stuff out the door. They won't go into the basement. I don't blame them. But it was a bit of.
People are not be putting things, storing things back.
I was going to say, once that's cleared out. I was gonna say, once that's cleared out, then you're done.
Exactly, yeah, the, the basement, I mean, that's not even a good place for, I mean, some of this stuff has drawn water, it's drawn damp, um, there, there's a potential there's critters down there.
Oh, a potential? Gee, thick.
Yeah, I mean, I know, I've seen one personally, but, um, yeah, I mean, so, just try to get it-
That's good, that's-
Just trying to move forward, get, get things cleaned up, so, yeah.
So, you know, something that we're, we're working on. Um, so, when I, I talked about us kind of categorizing things, we, um, had some main categories, technology investments, uh, furniture and equipment, new services, I know I'm going really fast, tell me to slow down if I, um-
Well, can you give us, I-
I-
Report them?
I was, yes, I've got, I, I just be exciting, I didn't want to pass it out to you all right at the end of time.
You didn't want us to-
I am excited, this is fun, yeah, this is great.
Facilities, maintenance, and fleet, uh, we have some bookstoreage solutions and displays, um, and then, of course, there are still the major projects using the restricted funds at Ashland and Atlee, those are ma, those are major projects that we, we need to work with the county on, that we want to move right forward, so, um, I'll start with, technology is, I guess, our, our biggest area, um, and we would like to replace the aging laptops, so, laptop, um, all of the admin have a laptop, as well as the branch managers, we have iPads that are in the branches now, we'd like to switch sunset the iPads and get laptops for those, I mean, they can use those for programming and things with our technology within our buildings, um, as well as have, you know, staff, you know, utilizing them for training. Um, we're also talking about docking stations for the laptops, so, I wouldn't have a, a separate PC and a laptop, so, we're actually, I mean, it's very cost-efficient, because you just dock your laptop, you have your monitor, and your mouse, and keyboard, um, so, we're not also maintaining a hard drive. Um, so, these costs include docking stations, um, for the staff desktops, um, as well. We're not going to get rid of the laptops that are here, um, that staff have, we're going to repurpose those to replace the aging, uh, laptop lab. Um, so, our laptop lab is a bank of computers that goes out to the branches, we'll do genealogy classes there, um, cricket classes, we've been really wanting to start, our laptop, current laptop lab is so outdated, we can't get the software on them, so, um, we're re- repurposing the staff PCs to replace the laptop lab, um, and be able to get those updated, um, and back, you know, and, and use again. A couple of other, um, and please stop me if I feel questions as we, as we go along, instead of kind of holding them till the, till the end, uh, switches and wireless access points, so, uh, the switches we have, um, we actually have internet speeds, uh, increases in some of our branches, but our switches are holding back the speed, um, so, we need our switches to be updated so that we can get, um, the speed, and the, the wireless access points will also help with that when they are upgraded, but the main point about upgrading the wireless access points is to have those that will capture Wi-Fi data. We have not had, um, Wi-Fi data usage numbers in several years, and it really is an important, you know, as your computer circulation, which, we actually saw a slight increase in computer circulation from last year to this year, um, but you're seeing more Wi-Fi usage, I mean, sure, almost all of us are, are connected, and we're not capturing that to be able to, you know, tell our stakeholders about, about it, so, that's, that's the important piece for those, too. Very minor piece that we're moving on, uh, Canva subscriptions, um, so, we, we want to, if, if you, Canva is a software, a web-based software that helps you create flyers and marketing materials.
Oh, Canva, oh, yeah, okay.
Um, we are going to be, we're rolling it out now, probably won't be able to show anything maybe until December, but, we have another software that's helping us create better marketing materials and flyers and things, but, we wanted to get a couple of Canva subscriptions so that we can, um, really utilize, create some marketing materials within the branches for, you know, the lockers, or, you know, general things that all the branches can log in, grab, print from there, um, it, it even makes the people that aren't great graphic designers kind of look good, honestly, uh, so, we really want to just give our, our marketing materials an upgrade with that. Um, another larger, uh, expense would be new all stations, they're early learning stations, um, we have them at all nine branches, the newest ones are from twenty-seventeen, we have some from back from twenty-ten, these are not, um, they do not go out to the internet, um, they are pre-programmed with proprietary software from, uh, the company with games, and, and so, the kids can log on, do, you know, have sessions, I think, sure that we're looking at some usage data, we're getting that a, all the way across the board, Atlee, Mechanicsville, Ashland, you're seeing over two hundred uses a month, and those, um, so, because of-
Those are like the desktop ones that are-
Mm-hmm, there's desktop ones, the same, they're, right now, the comparable price for the tablets, um, which we would have to utilize in some of our branches, like Montpelier, there's really not a place in the children's area for that, so, we would probably have a mix of both of those. Um, so, we're not, we really are aging out of, we, we have aged out of the warranty on all of them, um, so, that would be a cost to replace all of them. An idea for furniture, and, so that's, wraps up technology.
Technology, okay.
Uh, furniture and, and equipment, idea of AEDs at all of the branches, obviously, we have one at Goochlin, but we do not have, we had one at King and Queen, we do not have them at any of our Hanover, um, or King William branches, so, it'd be-
Would also suggest maybe one of the Life Facts at each of the, um, each of the libraries.
I was, I, I was speaking with Ivy Sager, uh, with Hanover County, and she said that there's also now, um, a compartment, like a writer com, complement to the AED that would hold, um, a dose of Narcan, um, as well, so, it's kind of, you know, you're just, you could be able to provide all of that in one, you know, central area, which is, which is great. That's kind of furniture, furniture and equipment, new services, uh, so, we've talked about this for a while, but haven't been able to implement this, is, is the idea of creating some outreach kits, and so, these would be kind of bundles that our staff could use, we're talking about three of them, um, it's got a cart, it's got the acrylic holders, it's got a prize wheel, so, you know, something that we, when we go out to festivals and fairs, that would make it easy at the table, and be able to ship that over to our branches for them to take out to, you know, the community days.
Goochlin Day, yeah.
Exactly, exactly. Um, and, and some marketed materials, an updated, you know, tablecloth, um, and some branded giveaway prizes for, for, for those events. Uh, digital access to the Richmond Times-Dispatch would be, um, available, so, this would be available in the buildings as well as out, outside of the buildings twenty-four-seven, it's remote access to, uh, digital access to the Richmond Times-Dispatch, as well as historic, um, archives up, I think, from nineteen eighty-five to current. Um, museum passes, uh, we've got our public services coordinators working, um, to reach out, we don't have an estimate on these yet, um, but to reach out to local, um, cultural, um, museums, science museum, you know, Lewis Ginter, uh, there's several others where we can partner with them and provide library, provide passes that can be checked out at the library, um, that would be at no cost to, and, we have the nature backpacks, which will allow people to get access to state parks, um, for free, and this would be a way for them to access museums, very, um-
Well, now, free to the user, or-
Free to the user.
And maybe a cost to us.
That's what we're, we're working on, and that will vary from, um, you know, museum to museum, as well, and, you know, we would ha, we could have, not necessarily one for each branch, but maybe five, you know, whatever we determine we want to start with, see what the pop, you know, see how it goes, and then add or subtract as, as needed, so. The other kind of bigger, uh, idea is an outreach van, um, and this kind of, it ties into the next item, which is fleet and, and facilities and maintenance, um, we have an aging fleet, so I guess I, I'll kind of go into, so, we have, we have two Sprinter vans, um, that are newer.
They're from twenty-seventeen.
Thank you. And one caravan that is from the nineteen hundreds.
Nineteen-
Yeah, I think ninety-
Is it ninety-seven?
It's either ninety-six or ninety-seven.
Nineteen hundreds.
Yes, that's what my kids say, so I had to, um, you're, we're on nineteen hundred. Um, yes, so, that caravan needs to be decommissioned.
Yes.
Um, he, it needs to, we've, we'd like to have a ceremony for that one, but-
It, it spends more time than fleet now, than it does on the road.
It does, and so, we're also seeing with the ones from twenty-seventeen needing a bit more maintenance, right?
Yes.
Um, so, we could purchase a new Sprinter van, um, there's still life in the twenty-seventeen ones, and so, what we would like to do is take one of the ones that was hitting the road every, you know, every other day on delivery, and turn it into an outreach van, you know, so that you could have a van, we could wrap it with, you know, marketing, you know, it could be a rolling, um, library promotional van, but it would go out to these festivals, uh, with our folks, and provide just greater visibility, and, I mean, our, our staff are using their own vehicles, you know, for, for hauling all of these things, they don't necessarily have a vehicle large enough to haul all of the things, um, we could use, we do storytimes at daycares, all of those sorts of activities, so, we think it would still get a fair amount of use, to where we can justify, um, you know, keeping it on, but it's not gonna be, you know, on the road, driving, you know, delivery, so, kind of, you know, repurposing, um, a current delivery van for an outreach van, and then purchasing a, a new Sprinter van for delivery. Um, another kind of major expense, I believe, but we don't have an estimate for, would be the lighting issue at the Mechanicsville branch in the children's area, um, since the building was built, the, and I, I know they did put candle studies when the building was, um, built, it has always been dim in the children's area, and now those lights are, the ballasts are going out, um, they cannot be replaced, the fixtures need to be, the entire fixtures need to be replaced in that area. Um, and, an old estimate, and I'm talking with the, like, in, um, two thousand and nine, was somewhere around thirty thousand dollars to replace that lighting, we'd have to get a quote, and I, you know, we're happy to work with Hanover County on that, but that is an issue that I think it needs, um, attention now. Um, that's our facilities, maintenance, and fleet, um, book storage solutions and displays, um, you probably, if you remember at Montpelier, when you went, they had mag boxes for magazines and newspapers, supposedly those acrylic boxes, um, they're really nice, the current issue goes in the front, and then all of the materials in the bag, it would replace, you know, the older style, which is here with the magazines and the, um, you know, like, in a binder, and you flip up, and all of the issues are behind it, just, it, it's more visually appealing, um, and it's, attracts attention to the, to the collection.
Is it working well at Mont-
It is, so we have it at Montpelier and at Atlee now.
Oh, okay.
Um, a, as well as for newspapers, so, it would be updating that, as well as, um, this would be a totally new solution for VOX books, so, these are the books I was talking about that are those read-along ones.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Um, they're difficult to shelf, because they have that little component on the one side of the book, um, which makes it not sit flat on the shelf, um, because it's, it's thicker on one side than the other, there are acrylic displays that help, you know, manage that collection, and, um, we would be excited to get those, as well as some board book browsing bins, um, those are acrylic displays as well that phase out the board books, um, so that the kids can flip through and, you know. Um, it's just a, uh, it would really refresh, uh, if you, you know, can go out at here at Goochlin and look at the magazine section, it would really freshen that area up and, um, give it a more modern, um, a more modern, modern look, a postage meter for interlibrary loans, several people very excited about this, we are kind of, very, very excited. Um, who would have thought, this is under a hundred dollars a month, is what we're talking about here, but a postage meter, um, I, many people don't know this, but our staff person and collection development, um, has to take the interlibrary loans to the post office, and, you know, it's considerable amount of time, um, and effort, in her own, you know, vehicle, um, depending on how busy the post office is, um, to do that, this would eliminate that, uh, we would be able to not, I mean, Ken goes to the, um, post office a lot, I mean, fairly regularly.
Our current process is, we, we have stamps, we have a little scale, they, they put the package on the stamps, they, they put the package on the scale, they kind of look it up to see what, exactly, and then they try to put on enough physical postage to cover it, but when you do that, the post office then makes you physically go to the, and have it rechecked while you're there, you can't just walk in and drop it off, or the lady at, the, the nice mail lady that comes and picks up our stuff won't pick up items like that, if it's metered through a postage machine, we don't have to travel to the post office anymore, so that's hours of staff time that could be better used to do that, plus, we're probably, we're gonna get a discount on postage with a meter, it's about four cents an item, at least, um, we're probably putting on accurate postage, we are probably overspending on postage, um, and the biggest loss we had, honestly, with the office break-in in the spring, is they stole our postage, at least with a postage meter, can somebody certainly steal that postage meter, yes, but it's a lot easier than walking out with all my stamps, I, I'm, I don't know how else to say it, like, yeah, I'm, at least if you're gonna rob me, I'll work for it, like, that, that's all I'm saying.
And we think that we would be able to increase the amount of ILLs that we are doing, so there's your, you know, um, kind of, back to the, the customer, that we would be able to process more and do more.
Well, I think it just the savings in the, in the staff time.
Absolutely, I mean, I don't think, for the, under a hundred dollars a month, we're, we're actually probably saving.
I'm surprised you haven't had one already.
Yes, and, uh, the other one under here is the new delivery van, but we kind of discussed it in, in the discussion about that. Um, Ken was gonna talk more about how this plugs into the current budget, and where we might be going into the, the reserve fund, which I thought, you know, would be helpful, but-
You know, I, I'm a subject, just throw it out there, the delivery van, I wonder if, um, a, one could be donated, a dealership-
One dealership would be willing to get the, the publicity for donating to the libraries.
Or at least give us a nice break on it.
Or a nice break.
Yeah, there should be opportunities through, uh, Hanover has a Bubba Ruppus Fleet program to use their purchasing power to get, get a van that, that will be-
We may be looking at something, having one that's slightly larger than what we have, because we have had scenarios where, um, we are not able to fit whatever it is in, in the Sprinter van.
Could I, I just throw in an idea, uh, something that I would like to see happen, I'm watching as some of our libraries, especially in Hanover, are getting surrounded by other things, I know the Mechanicsville library's been surrounded for a while, uh, we're now watching the Atlee library get surrounded, too, um, I would love to explore kind of bigger signs for, you know, putting, getting attention to the fact that-
At the main roads, yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't think it needs, obviously, not every library has the same situation, but definitely Mechanicsville and Atlee, I feel like we need to maybe be proactive about trying to get bigger signs for attention, or, the other thing I thought about with, with the Atlee library is, all the people going through that Starbucks drive-through right now, there's no sign on that side of the building that says what it is, because it's on the front side, which is facing out, so, even just thinking about putting some kind of signage on that side, so that all those Starbucks customers now are seeing Atlee library, so, anyway, it's just some, I don't know if that's on your radar, but-
As I say, some of that, I know that Mechanicsville, and I looked into it, and, um, the, just the library, the green library sign up on the middle of the median is something that you can work with VDOT on, um, there were signs out on three sixty that said, "Library's this way," but with all of the changes, it, and I think one of the signs got knocked down, and then our, our library sign did not get- get, did not reappear after that, that we could do those as well.
So anyway, just something I've been thinking about, especially as I saw construction happen in front of Atlee library and I've heard they've approved something on the other.
Wong tacos, yes.
Wong tacos, yes. There's going to be something on the other side as well, we're just going to have completely blocked in the library behind other things, so.
That's a great suggestion.
I like that. We don't even hear.
No, yeah. And I think what they did with Montpelier, I, you know, I had asked Mr. Taylor about, what's it going to look like? Is it going to say Pum monkey library on the street? And it does, so I'm happy to see that too.
They did on the apartment sign, there is, it says Mechanicsville Library, sure, I think it's the Sherwood Apartments and Mechanicsville's there. I, I think because, and there's another slot there, because I believe that they had slated maybe a retail space within the, the apartment complex, kind of on the side towards the library, so I don't know if anybody will actually take this on that, but.
Interesting.
Thank you. We, we did put in, and I, I think it was really helpful, the Friends helped us at Ashland Branch, to, all of the signs that are in the parking lot and on the corners of the building, you see they're kind of like yellow and they tie into a lot of the town signage that we worked with the town on. It was very helpful that at the time the mayor was also the president of the Ashland Friends.
Awesome.
Yeah, to get that, he's like, here's where you can put the signs. But then we worked with them on that for the, the parking and the library signs, I think that really helped visibility. Yeah, the Ashland, the sign was on the front of the building towards the train tracks and not, there was nothing on any of the others, so we kind of covered it and had a local sign company with us.
Does VDOT allow any other signage besides that little green sign or no?
There are certain places where it's VDOT and certain places that it's some, it's other plant, you know, talk to the county about planning.
Okay.
I think in the median, I don't think so, but maybe on properties, like you said, like going into like the Starbucks entrance somewhere over there, we might be able to do something.
Is there ever, like, I know there's the green sign, to be honest, you know, I drive by those when I'm driving, so I don't even see them, but I just even wondered about putting Atlee Library underneath it, just on a, you know, another little street sign, because I'm a reader, you know, so like when I'm driving, I'm reading stuff, you know, but anyway, you know, that even that might give it more visibility. People are like, oh, that's a library sign, you know.
Yeah.
All right, sorry, I didn't want to.
Some of the things when we start looking at construction projects is getting, you have counties buy-in because we're managing their building or their property or something like that. So, so the question is, this sort of ties back into, welcome to amending the budget for FY25, is we've got these ideas and how do we, how do we pay for it? So we, we've got the reserve fund, but we also are in a situation where we will need to recognize new revenue that we've got coming in. So I've got over here, it's our original budget, so here's what we budgeted for revenue, here's what we budgeted for expense, we're going to use a hundred and five thousand dollars from the reserve fund to, to get, to get us through this year, and then we have changes that, that occur along the way, and then what our overall change in fund balance would So one of the things with amending the budget this year, I really don't want to do is obviously grow the fund balance. So some of these projects too are projects that we could, you know, commit to in a six month timeframe to kind of get them done, so we're not growing the fund balance. But I do have new revenue we need to recognize and we need to, to expense it out. So we did have an increase in state aid after we passed, passed the budget of sixty five thousand dollars. We have the, the reimbursements from the, the ARPA, the FC grant money, that was a hundred thousand dollars that had been spent in prior years in the equipment line. One of the things that Ms. Schaber has recommended we do for the audit is we do amend donated services. So we have that. So I've added a category, it was zero here, just like the federal, but our donated services. And what we're really doing is we're just taking FY24's donated services and putting it in there, and then we're going to expense it out on the bottom. So it's a net zero move, but what it will allow us to do auditing at the backend is when we get that FY25 figure, we can actually start tracking then our change in percentage in donated services and it would actually be revealed in the audit. Right now it's a calculation on a spreadsheet that I talk to the auditors about to make sure it's reasonable. So donated services and then other revenue, which are items like our fines and our fees, and in this case, we, we still in 25 donated rather conservatively for investment income. You'll see on the board packets here in a couple of days. The first quarter has come in, so we're, and we're tracking to be above that. So just trying to recognize that investment income plus reimbursements from the Friends groups throughout the year for things that they provide to re, to have that in there. So that's where that seventy thousand comes in. So I'm looking at a total change in revenue of eight hundred thousand dollars, a little bit of, of a push because of the donated services, but we want to spend that, obviously that change, and then we've tried to spend a little bit of the fund balance. So what I've projected, what I've done is taken, we've taken all of the estimates we have to date, we've plugged in to the appropriate categories. So books and material is, is really the change in state aid. There's always a little local funding in books and materials that we can offset and put forth for some of the other projects. Contractual, so these would be some of the items she had in there. I'm trying, and I've lost my examples.
The postage meter.
Postage meter, there you go. Thank you for helping me on that. Postage meter, it's not thirteen thou, it's not thirteen thousand, but there's some other stuff in there where we have some contractual obligations to pick up while doing these things. One of the big places is the equipment. With the laptops, the changes, you're looking about fifty thousand dollar in equipment change. The learning stations are around thirty six thousand. Equipment also includes, for budgetary purposes, equipment is also where your furniture changes lie. So some of the, the newspapers and the books she's talking about are changing in there. The insurance change is just recognizing we had a small insurance change. The change in facilities and rent is the two extra months we, we spent at the old Montpelier recreational facility before the new facility was available for us. The change in the supply line is mainly starting to repurpose to build these outreach kits so we can get those out, that was in Jamie's plan. The telephone change is primarily the cost of bringing Mountpelier online using Verizon as their, their backbone and the changes in the monthly cost they're occurring this year. The contribution to locality is the final true up for the West Point expenses that we have where we were close to being done and we had some stuff sneak in that fell to the year. The donated services expense is a wash to the revenue. The utilities change is where I've, I've done the math right now, if you look at the 24 audit, we were under budget on utilities. We really did not change the budget in 25 very much. I suspect we're under budget in 25. I'd rather go ahead and fix it now and, 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 you know, admit to it. And then the final change we have is just estimating a new cost for a, a new actual delivery van plus the cost, and that is just an estimate, so these could come lower for sort of the, the repurposing of the old Sprinter van to be that sort of mobile advertising outreach van. We're doing a lot, we are doing a lot. Unfortunately, at the end of the day, I'm actually only looking about spending seventy six thousand dollars out of the fund balance though.
Step one.
But it's step one, and, and yeah, I can't buy it all off at once, we can't buy it off at once, but that's actually how we're paying for it. At the end of the day, we're looking at revenue that we had come in, you know, that, that is a bit of surprise, that won't be really a surprise in the future because it won't be present, and just trying to spend a little of that reserve fund out this year to get us a bit of a lower fund balance at the end of the year and getting some new programs, getting some new equipment and stuff out, you know, across the branches.
Can we have a copy of that?
Oh, sure.
I have a question too. So I see you've broken out E-rate on this budget. So what is the federal aid again? Because I'm used to E-rate being within the federal.
The federal, so during COVID, coming out of COVID, we had applied for several grants for equipment, for items of equipment, primarily Chromebooks, hotspots, things of that nature. We, we were granted approval, so we proceeded. When we moved forward to the reimbursement stage, there was a time period where we were denied and our E-rate consultants honestly just kept fighting for it, for lack of a better word, and they finally were successful after July 1 of this year of securing that old funding for money that we had spent two or three years ago at this point.
All right, thank you.
I mean, trying to just put it, obviously we've got equipment needs, so you could say we're trying to put it back into the equipment budget to, to cover things now like laptops and what. But that is a situation where it was a grant, they said, okay, you know, this all looks good. When we started submitting our expenses, they kind of changed the rules on us, where our E-rate consultant and E-rate central were great, I mean, they, they stayed with it. It was hard to budget for because we were getting denied, and I think we went through three denials, and he finally, it was like, he called right after the year once we had blessed the 25 budget, he's like, I think we've got, oh my God, that's great. Been better than yesterday, but it's great. But that's where we are. I, I don't, we had no other grants pending that we'd asked for or received at this point forward. So I, I don't, I'm not expecting another windfall of a hundred thousand dollars, so let's not get too comfortable.
Okay, this is extremely helpful.
Yes, very exciting.
So how do we best proceed? We, do we get an itemized list of how, what we want to do and cost? I'm, to vote, what I'm going to get is how do we vote on this and get this started?
At, at this point, I mean, I think, you know, we can, we can use finance committee here, we've got, Jamie's more detailed information to hand out to you guys. We've got sort of the overall amending the budget to sort of pay for right there. We put those together, and what the board would be voting on is really just amending, recognizing the revenue, recognizing the new expenses and amending the budget, and we would proceed from there.
Okay. But in doing so, can we, it would still be helpful to see, just, I'm kind of a freak about explanation and cost.
Yeah.
You know, like, yeah, just so everybody can kind of visualize where the money's going. So public mills, where the money's going and with the intent to get this started. And the first thing I'm thinking of is the postage meters to get those started. And, I mean, this is, this is wonderful, and I think we can be creative about how we attempt to get the van and just other items. You know, I know you'll reach out and you've got your vendors and I'm just curious about the cost, will we get right down to what the real cost is? And I think that you've done good estimating from what I can see.
And as you're reaching out, you know, for things like the van, you know, if there's some way that board members can help with that, you know, we are more than willing to step in and help.
We can turn, you know, maybe go over to parish board.
Parish board is what I was thinking.
Yeah, exactly. We know the guy's a parish board, we could maybe put them to the screws, see what happens. Who knows? Who knows?
Hanover's fleet manager has been very receptive to helping us.
Good, I'm sure. I mean, that's what they do all day, every day. I'm sure they're really good at it.
So he, he, he asked me, he's, when we were, the, the other van that was literally in parts on their lot, which was sold for three hundred fifty-two dollars. He was like, he goes, we're going to replace that, right? And I'm like, well, like, we had four, like, maybe not, but I've got, you know, you've seen our stuff. So he's, he's very sort of engaged. So I think if we, if, you know, if we say, yeah, you know, the board is ready to proceed, can I go ahead then and get, get the true cost? I mean, this is me, literally, the numbers we came up with was me going online to like ford.com and sort of filling out. I know, so I'm probably on the high end with my estimate, I'm expecting with their agreements and their purchasing power to come in low, so.
So really what we need is a motion to approve this budget to get the ball rolling, to get it started, and then as things come in, as you get the, the purchase orders or the, the contracts and such, that we can look at them. Do we have to vote on each one as it comes in, or do we just?
No, if you amend the budget to recognize and sort of recognize as a whole, these are the special projects we're pursuing with sort of these max costs, I think that's where we can start to kind of get things going and getting items in to, to make things happen.
I will mention, one of the projects that we've already kind of started the ball rolling on is a consultation with Cersei Dynex who operates our enterprise and our workflows. So this is our interli, our ILS, so our catalog, our backend, all of our software that we, we use, as well as host our website and our catalog features. We've already, we've signed on for two consultations with them, two calls, have all of library admin in to ask all of our questions. We got lots of them about, you know, how to get our website mobile friendly, you know, what upgrades are we needing to do that we haven't considered. It really is for the, you know, us to put everything out on the table and for them to give us recommendations on best ways to move forward. We know we're a few upgrades behind on our ILS, so, you know, we, we want to see what our options are, but those, those may be some software things that we might be, projects that we might be looking forward to as well, but we'll let you know what comes, which comes out of this.
When you're doing the budget presentations for the different divisions, are you telling them about some of these projects that you're, you know? I think that was one of the things when we, you know, met with our administrator, which they're having us do on a regular basis now, to say to them that, you know, we have, we have several things that we are looking at doing and, you know, we have the funds to do these things. And so, just so they understand, we are, you know, we are addressing the fact that we're upgrading, you know, we're trying to stay up, you know.
Well, we're redirecting public funds.
Yes.
To something other than a new building.
Other than a building.
We're putting it into the library.
Yes.
And that's, that's real important for people to understand.
I just have a question about vehicles. Do you think your vehicle needs change with the decision of whether King William stays or not? Or do you feel like whatever happens there, you still need a vehicle? I'm, I'm just curious, because I know you're, you're also getting books down to West Point, you're getting books to Upper King William. I just didn't know how much of that is.
I think it's probably still right sized, if the fleet is right sized, where we've gone from four to, to three, well, two and a half. The ninety seven caravan. So I, I still think that with the amount of, you know, driving and the mileage that we put on them, it would be.
Yeah, I, I think if we looked at a fleet management policy, you know, the idea of like some sort of cyclical rotation for fleet vehicles before we let them age to a point where we, we really are selling them at a loss or selling them for parts, which is what we're doing now. We would want to, you know, maybe extend our, our shelf life on our vehicles because they'd have less mileage, but we're looking at vehicles now that are probably end of life versus, yeah, I mean, because it's been, it's been twenty seven, well, they were twenty seventeen vehicles, I think they were actually probably purchased in twenty sixteen. So we're looking at a fleet, all the vehicles right now have plus a hundred thousand miles on them easy, and they're also approaching that ten year mark. I was sort of reading up on fleet management policies, and these are sort of those red flags where it's like, you know, this is where you need to start looking at, you know, you're going to have problems keeping vehicles on the road if you don't, you know, rotate fleet. It's sort of the same idea, like the, even the computers and stuff, we really don't have this sort of cyclical policy to replace this equipment. We're really running it until it's, it's dead, and then we're kind of in this rush to replace it, and it's probably not the best place to be. We maybe want to be a little more proactive and do this stuff. And it probably, you know, there's probably money that's been built over the years if we had been doing that, you know? I'm not saying we would have absorbed that two million dollars, but maybe instead of two million, it would be one point seven. Yeah.
Yeah, and I, just a quick shout out, you know, this did not come completely out of, you know, our brands, a lot of. A lot of folks, it really is a team that's very motivated, getting the quotes and talking about what we think the needs are for the libraries. So again, I think I say it every time, but it really is a team effort and to kind of gather all of this information and present to you all. I'm just really, you know, proud of the people that we have that are, you know, motivated to do this.
I love seeing what you're doing with the people in the field and, you know, utilizing them.
We do have a great group.
So what's the timeline as far as, are we going to try to, I'll just ask that question, what's the timeline? As far as presenting amended budget and approving it and all that?
I mean, some of it, we're still within budget to start moving on in regards to some of the equipment stuff. Because we've got money set aside in the budget, $50,000 for actual software equipment needs to start moving on. But I mean, if we could, I mean, maybe we're on too short of a timeline to see if we can get this, present it to the full board for consideration in November. But I would think maybe if we could get a vote on it in December would be great. I mean, I hate bringing anything to the board and asking them to decide the same day. I really do hate that.
Well, I think if we can get this information that you've got out tied to this information, if we can get that out in the next few days, I think we could do it in November.
Well, I think we could too, because also we can get it out with the Finance Committee's recommendation.
Yes.
Doesn't that?
Yeah, that helps.
Yes. Because I don't see any reason to wait.
I don't see any red flags, to be very honest. I think everything that you've talked about are things that are going to be beneficial.
Well, what I heard was a very thoughtful list of items that you guys have considered.
We really were trying to get a little something from each category to try to make it, you know, pretty well-rounded too.
Yeah, I think that Mechanicsville Library lighting, though, that's a, that's a biggie, and I don't think that can be pushed to the side either.
Oh, I don't think it ought to be pushed off at all.
I think that it's time to get a new estimate on that.
For sure.
Or a couple of different electricians or whoever does that kind of thing. And I mean, the lighting back, you know, the ballast and the lighting back then versus what's available now with LED and such is, it's a big difference, so who knows?
I was going to say, anything to help the utility bill at Mechanicsville would be much appreciated.
And I think to even say that, you know, when we're talking about replacing it, it will, you know, help us decrease the, you know, the overall cost of, you know, the utilities.
But also, bad lighting in a library is just a basic need. That's something that needs to be addressed, I think, sooner than later. So I'd like to, I mean, I would like to get a move on getting estimates for that.
What's the interface with the county when it comes to a project like that?
I would be talking with Jim Taylor about it, and I kind of let him, you know, take it from the county side. But they have just, I mean, been very good, I mean, my experience in the few months has just been very on it. We have a, the fire enunciator needs some, the fire suppression system needs some work at Mechanicsville, and there's a meeting. I think that's being coordinated now to just get that resolved, so I think we can move on.
I think from their procurement process, if we said, hey, these are ideas, if they wanted to go out, and that way they're using their people, and say, okay, here's the estimates, and then we can say, okay, library board, we have an estimate to do lighting for 40 grand. We do that as a local contribution, so we just contribute back to them. And they manage the project, get it done, it's their building, they still get to maintain control of the building. We get to contribute back, I mean, we still have it documented as to what we did. I also think that's a step too with our staff, you know. I mean, I hung some lights in my garage, but I'm not saying I'm ready to manage a lighting project on live, you know. Working within your expertise and your wheelhouse, yeah.
But are you having to fit in within their schedule then? Like, is it something that they can be like, well, we're not going to get to that till a year and a half down the line?
I would think if they've got the funding for it and they're hiring a contractor, it would ease their burden. That way they're not using their staff to try to do it. That would be how I would envision it. I mean, we'd have to talk to Jim, he might have a different.
Okay, that sounds good.
Well, if you need help there again, please let me.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, well, so we'll get this document and this document out as part of our board kit and just present it along with the Finance Committee's recommendation to get this stuff started. I mean, it's pretty much that simple, I think.
I think it is too.
Yeah, let's do it.
And we'll put it on the agenda as a discussion item.
Yeah.
In the sense that, I'm sorry, I have a clock dropping me out, but we'll put it on so that you'll have a chance to present to them like you have with us. And if we can even tie it even closer with the finances, you know, so that we're talking about it.
I was going to say, kind of mirror the budget document.
Right.
Yeah. All right, any more discussion about this, guys? All right, does anybody have any other business they'd like to discuss at this point?
I just have a question about, so you mentioned the Ashland and Atlee projects. Do you have any kind of idea or timeline when you think those things, you'll have the capacity to address those things there? Because I know there are ideas floating around out there and there have been proposals.
Yes, where we left it was that we needed a special meeting with the county, with Jim Taylor, and we need to get on that to get those moving forward.
Because, did I understand correctly that Ashland, there is kind of more detailed ideas already?
We have more detailed ideas, now, you know, once you get an architect, like the feasibility might change a bit. But Atlee, it's more conceptual. I mean, we know we would like to spend money on that patio area, getting some shade structures and furniture to really outfit that space. There are a few things with our technology that I feel like are, we need to keep up with before they age out, that we might want to utilize some of those funds for, it's just hard, you know, to know how far that money is going to go.
And you tie, do you tie in the Friends at the same time with these?
Yes, yes, the Atlee Friends for sure are very interested in contributing to the patio project and helping to get that off as well.
Great. Okay, do you have one for, well, you're going to send it out to us.
Yes, I will.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, well then, no, or.